Okay, we will call the regular scheduled Monmouth Planning Commission to order for March 27th, 2025, 6:30 PM. We're here at the city council chambers in City Monmouth. Announcements from staff?
Yes, thank you Commissioners and Chair. We have a couple announcements. First one, we have one filed plat, Devo Bend Replat Lot 17 and 18 to Lot 17R was filed for record. That's 101, 103 Shagmark Trail. General announcements, just passing along several bills that we are actively watching. We mentioned it last month, House Bill 1510 is now Act 314 since it's been signed by the governor. That eliminates the ETJ for all cities in Arkansas. We are watching House Bill 1754, which would put some severe limits to zoning by cities. And we also are watching Senate Bill 456, which has passed the Senate Committee, excuse me, not House, but Senate Committee, and expected to go over to the House Committee probably next week when they return from spring break. That bill has a lot of tweaks to it. We're expecting some amendments, but it would essentially eliminate single-family zoning. It would allow duplexes, triplexes to be built in single-family zones by rights. And then one final bill that I just became aware of from the Arkansas Floodplain Managers Association is Senate Bill 518, and that would regulate how strict cities can be above and beyond what the NFIP requires for floodplain management. Secretary Mary Winnick was reappointed to the four-year term. Her term now goes through 2029. And as a final reminder, we now need to elect officers.
Thank you. If you would, Jason, please provide those links to us via email for the watch, if you would. That would be helpful. Some may have some interest in tracking those bills, which there's a good site for that. If you need some help with that, I can help with that. So we have elections of officers tonight. Mary is not here. She is our current secretary. We will go in order from secretary, vice chair, and then chair. So I'd like to open nominations for secretary. I have not had a conversation with Ms. Mary about this opportunity, so I'm not for sure, but she is obviously, as a commissioner, is able to be nominated even though she is absent. So first, I'd like to open up nominations for secretary.
I'd like to nominate Mary Winnick for secretary.
Do you hear a second? Okay. Motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Very good. Now we will vote on Ms. Mary Winnick as secretary. All those in favor by saying yes?
Yes.
We will now vote on the vice chair position. Open up nominations for vice chair position. We need a nomination.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Tracy Gill.
Very good. We have any other nominations for vice chair? Seeing that we'll close nominations and now act on the nomination for Tracy as vice chair. All those in favor by saying yes? Say yes.
Yes.
No. Motion carries. Congratulations, Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Now we'll open up nominations for chair. I will say before you open up, I'm fine serving another term. I don't know if you guys know that. This will be my last term. I'll term out in January, but I'm happy to serve as your chair should you elect, but I'm not going to nominate myself for it. So we'll open up nominations for chair.
I'd like to nominate Craig Johnson for chair.
Second.
You're in first and second. Close, any other nominations? Close nominations. All those in favor of myself being the chair indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
No, motion carries. Thank you for the business. Well, now, improvements for the February 27, 2025 meetings. They were included in your packet. Do we have any changes, comments that may be addressed?
I move to approve the minutes from February 27, 2025, Monmouth Planning Commission regular meeting.
Thank you, John. I have a second.
Second.
Very good. Hearing the first and the second, we'll now act on approval of the minutes for February 27, 2025. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Or oppose no. Motion carries for approval of February 27, 2025 minutes. I do not have any public comments on non-agenda items. I do have seven comment cards in regarding to the agenda item on Devo Bend, which is number three on tonight's agenda. We do have quite a few members in the audience. If you intend to speak, then we would request that you fill out a comment card. Those comment cards are in the corner. It's not too late to do that since this is the third agenda item, and then make their way up here or just pass them to our city attorney, and he'll pass them on around. So we will open, seeing that there are no public comments on non-agenda items this evening from the audience or from cards that were submitted, we will open the public hearing. Our first item is of old business, which is variance 25-1. That item had been removed under a subsequent submission. It was carried over from old business, but they modified their submission, and as such, the variance is no longer pertinent to the submission, so the item was removed. Any other discussion from that, from staff? Good. So we will now move into new business, which is the Energi proposed distribution lines, which is EXCA 25-26. These are proposed new distribution lines for Energy Forum, a new electrical substation. There was a packet regarding the location of these, which is in an industrial zone. My understanding is it requires our approval for the proposed distribution lines in an industrial area, and that's what we're acting on this evening.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. And for clarification, this does not go to city council since there's no variance requested. On the map that you've shown, Energi modified their plans, so they no longer are going to be going across the city's parcel. They're going to be crossing over Lewis Nelson, which is in the industrial zone above head, and then they're staying above head in the industrial zone running south until it gets into the commercial area, at which time they take it underground and run it in compliance with their ordinance to be underground in the commercial area to Carnahan, following west down Carnahan until it gets past the commercial area, at which time they bring it back above ground and run it above head along Carnahan. That is, that meets the intent of the code, and basically it just needs the city's planning commission's approval.
The only comment, thank you, Stan. Appreciate that, Scott. The only comment that I have regarding the exhibit that was provided with this application packet, which is a little different because they went underground, as opposed to the last submission we had was underground. It looks like, I'm not for sure what the lines mean on easement, but on that, I guess that would be the northwest corner of Louis Nelson and Carnahan Drive. It looks like they clip outside that. I don't know if they're going to stay within the designated right-of-way, or they'll get easement, or whatever the case is. But as shown, it does show the clip outside of that representation. But I'm not for sure what it is. I'm assuming it's right-of-way.
Mr. Chair, if you remember, Ms. Smith from Pinnacle Energy had mentioned that they had already got easement rights from the church. They own some property now, so they may be...
I think this is city's property. Is it not in the corner?
Well, it'd be a right-of-way, so it'd become an excavation. This is kind of also why we ran this as an excavation permit. Any boring they'll have to do, they'll have to come through us for approval and satisfy all of our requirements on the excavation side of it. And that's going to be typically is in the right-of-way, or it's going to be just inside of a utility easement, just inside the property lines.
And if they do not have easement access, they'll have to acquire that from the property owners that they're going across. Of course, like I said, they're no longer going across city properties, so that won't come into play for the city.
That's my only comment. Thank you. Any other protocol comment?
I make a motion for approval. I make a motion to approve EXCA-2526, subject to staff and city engineering comments.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? Hearing none, the commission will now act on EXCA 25-26 for the Energi proposed distribution lines. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose no. Motion carries that the Energi proposed distribution lines is approved. We appreciate y'all coming and going through with us a little bit, so appreciate it. Okay. Our second item that the commission is scheduled here this evening is a conditional use permit 25-2, which is a MEMS substation conditional use permit. This is the proposed new MEMS substation in the PCD zone, which is requiring a conditional use permit in an existing building. Stan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a conditional use permit for a ambulance substation quasi-public. The question was asked before, why no preliminary development plan? This is consistent with previous conditional uses on this same property for a church and a daycare back around, I believe, 2017, 2018. Because it is an existing building, and they're going to be using existing leased space, all it needs is just a straight conditional use. Pretty straightforward. We did, we found the original plan for the property, and at the subcommittee, we had highlighted these four parking spots approximately that hopefully you can see on the monitor, to go where the ambulances would park. Going over the staff reports, the proposed conditions that we have are minimize the use of sirens and lights in parking areas. Mr. Thompson with MEMS has said that that should not be a problem, and they only use the lights and sirens when they have to. So that should not be an issue. And then also, the condition that all ambulance parking is on the Millwood Circle side. That would help with the neighborhood. You have Carnahan Village behind, so that would help there. Staff analysis, proposed conditional use for an ambulance substation within a PCD. It's requested in Tennessee in an existing building. It fits the area within, and the land use is institutional, so that's why it also fits. This follows past actions on proposed changes in existing PCD, such as daycare, church, to allow input on, and it also allows public input on potential uses that could be seen as disruptive to surrounding residential and require a CUP in the C1 and C2 districts when abutting residential. The applicant will be cognizant of the surrounding neighborhoods abutting the property. When sirens are needed for calls, the suite applicant will be utilizing is located on Millwood Circle side of the property and proposed parking areas blocked from the residential area. We recommend a due pass recommendation to the city council contingent on further staff, commissioner, and city engineer comments.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, John.
Do we have any public comment on this one?
No, there was no public comment on it. I had one call from a tenant in the existing building, but it was just a general fact finding. We had no negative or positive public comments received.
Are they going to, I assume they have designated, I don't know what their lease agreement is for sure. Are they going to have designated signage, i.e. somebody's not going to park here?
Mr. Thompson's here.
Yeah, so I don't see that as part of the application. Is that the owner's intent, if you would approach? Our lectern is turned the wrong way. That's rude of us. So we'll get that, we'll get that rectified for you real quick. I don't know what they're doing.
Greg Thompson, MEMS. So when we did talk with the land, the property owner, he did talk about putting some signage up there, because we'll need to put power there to be able to plug trucks up at night.
Yep.
So keep everybody else out of it.
So you'll have a designated space there with your...
Yes, yes. And there was one thing you said, just to make sure I'm clear. We talked about the limited use of sirens. Yes, we would use light. So we've mentioned both there. And we do think that ultimately, actually, it'll quieten the area because we're not running hot to the building next door, which is a fairly frequent place for us to go.
Yeah, I understand. So the condition on the use is, it says minimized use of sirens and lights in the parking. Didn't say completely restrictive. It's requesting to minimize it. So you said you would turn, I think from the standpoint is that you would turn the lights on but not hit the sirens until you hit the streets.
Correct, correct, correct.
So I think minimize is, we'd give latitude there.
Right.
Any other questions? Chair entertaining, motion?
I move to a due pass recommendation to the city council of conditional use 25-2, MEMS substation conditional use permit contingent on further city commissioner and city engineer comments.
Second.
Hearing the first and second, the commission will now act on conditional use 25-2 for the MEMS substation conditional use permit. All those in favor of a due pass recommendation to city council signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those no. The conditional use will be recommended to city council scheduled to me two weeks from today, gentlemen?
Yeah, not next Monday, but Monday.
Yeah. They meet on Monday.
Okay.
They meet on Monday here at 6:00.
Okay.
So if you want some representation...
What is the date? Don't make sure I'm...
Should be April 7.
April 7.
Yeah, April 1st is Tuesday, and they usually meet the first Monday, first and third Mondays. So we'll have it pushed on the agenda for April 7.
Thank you. We appreciate y'all. Thank you.
Very good, very good. Thank you for attending. Okay. So our next item here is item number three, which is the rezone. Actually, two items here. Let me see here. There's quite a few comment cards, but the comments are not specific to whether, well, some are. Well, I have one for rezone, but I would assume both of these are standing. And that happens sometimes, and that's okay. So what we'll do is we're going to hear staff introduce, and since there is quite a few people that are willing to act on, and I don't know if your comment is specific. The first one is a rezoning, and I have it first. The rest are not specific. So what we'll do is we'll hear staff introduce the topic for Devo Bend, Lake Estates rezoning. It is a rezone for 25-1. And then we'll hear their introduction as well as what their recommendation is, because some in the audience may not quite understand altogether what the development is, and let them have an opportunity of that. And then we will actually hear, I'll go through these in the order that they were received, assuming that you want to speak on either one or the other. You can speak on both, so they are separate items. So those that want to speak specifically to the rezone can do so, and those that can speak separately to the Lake Estates, which is the preliminary plat. So you do have the opportunity to speak twice. I was just going to let you know that. So with that being the case, I'd like staff to introduce item number three for the rezone 25-1, Devo Bend, Lake Estates rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This first one, sorry, the map has 60 acres plus a mile. We've actually dropped the rezoning down to roughly 48 acres. That was actually a request that I made to Mr. Holloway, just so we stay out of potentially rezoning any open space. And the rezoning line actually follows the floodway line at its extent. So it's been cut down to roughly 48 acres versus the 60 acres. This is a rezoning from PRD, which is, PRD is a planned residential district. As you may know, many may know, PRD has a lot of flexibility to it. We requested, speaking with the applicant, to go to R1. R1 has a more stringent as far as setbacks and the number of lots that can be built, typically three or less per acre. What's proposed that we'll discuss in the next item is for 21, is 21 single-family lots, 1.3 acre average. And there's two tracks, so that's where the 23 lots comes from. So the rezoning is pretty straightforward. The, just kind of go straight down the zoning and land use. The zoning designation has not changed since the annexation of this property. The annexation was back in 2002 as part of the Perkins, the large Perkins annexation. The proposed zoning conforms with Monmouth Forward land use plan. It's in a state neighborhood. The Monmouth Forward actually calls for cluster residential. The proposed zoning and occupying subdivision, accompanying subdivision is low density, a state style, which complements the surrounding area with trails and open space geared towards conservation efforts to the adjacent wide of Bayou Wetlands. Traffic considerations, 21 lots, 21 lots, typical average that's used in most planning is seven and a half vehicle trips per day per resident. That would add an additional 158 vehicle trips a day. And that's been, the main concern that we've heard is from the Zajac Road width and whatnot. And that's going to be discussed with potential of a roadway improvement district as a solution in upgrading existing underbuilt roads in the area. And again, this is all stuff that will be discussed in the next item as well. Legal considerations, reasonable fire and police access may see slight delay due to the nature of the access to this area. We have spoken with Chief Eaton. This is actually, we've roughly, using the RAM system, is about a 10-minute turnaround. Commissioner Jones, I believe you got the information there, so he saw that as well. It's actually equivalent, from station one to here is 10 minutes, and the equivalence would be from station two to the tip of Devo Bend, which is on the opposite side of the bayou, is 10 minutes as well. Just kind of give you some consideration on that. There has been no requests on this property since its annexation in 2002. Obviously, we're seeing a large demand for single-family housing in Monmouth. The proposed development, located there is not easily accessible, is within service distance by fire and police compared to other areas. Sanitation has stated no concerns with servicing the area. Tools for fiscal impact analysis not yet available to staff. That is something that is working through the process of the mayor's office. We feel the proposed zoning fits with the city's past growth patterns, and approximately 0.44 lots per acre would have limited impact on our finances. I don't need to go over the, I'll let you just read over your guidelines and basing a decision. And our staff analysis, the rezoning from PRD to R1 does not change the overall use of the land. The R1 zoning establishes hard setback lines for the properties. The average size is 1.3 acre, fits with the general area, while the green space tracks create buffers from existing homes in the areas, and creates a buffer to the bayou area from individual lots. The additional 158 vehicles would cause minimal disruption with the existing 17 residents along Zajac. The road is currently 18 to 20 foot wide. In some areas, it is smaller. So that's smaller than the standard city and county road design. We are engaging with the county in solutions for improvement to county roads in coordination with the developments, such as the county road, a county road improvement district. Construction track would be concerned on this road, so preconstruction and post-construction evaluation should be considered by staff prior to approving any developments. And residential traffic when built is expected to have minimal effect on the road itself when compared to a much larger subdivision that could be built within an R1 zoning district or the PRD. We do recommend a due pass to the Monmouth City Council for the proposed master zoning map from PRD to R1 according to Section 9410. And there will be some platinos discussed for the next item.
What is the current R1 density permitted by code?
Roughly three units per acre.
And the proposal's at 1.3, right?
Yes.
And Mr. Chair, to compliment the staff report that Jason just went through, I'd kind of like to go through public comments that we received, if I could, since it kind of covers both the rezoning and the subdivision, just so that we can have that. I think it would be helpful as the public comes forward with any other comments. Would you be okay if I went through some of that, as well as the county's comments that they've had?
Sure.
So first off, in the packet that was provided to you, the county provided a letter to the city for the proposed subdivision, not necessarily the rezoning, but for the subdivision itself. And they listed several things that they had concerns with, that they did not agree with the subdivision moving forward.
Hang on a second. Is it?
Yes, it's the very back of your packet, so it's the last...
The two-page stuff sometimes throws me a little...
I'm sorry, yes. It's the very last...
It's the very last sheet.
The very last sheet.
Okay, I'm with you now, Mr. Director.
And this was, this was provided in the packet that was placed on the Agenda Center for the public. So this came in right before we put out our packet, and of course, they listed quite a few things that they had concerns with. The development, as far as developments in the city limits, they wanted, they should take access from city streets was one of the comments. The local county roads from which this development will take access are Mackey County Court Order roads that do not meet any suitable standards for two-way traffic. The construction traffic will likely substantially damage both Zajac and Gabanski Roads, which do not meet current county standards. And I'm just going to read through these, if that's okay for the public, since they're out here. Emergency services to this development will not be able to access the subdivision from any Monmouth Collector or Artero Road, and will have to access the subdivision via MacArthur Drive to Marshay lateral unless short Marshay Road is made a thoroughfare. Zajac will need substantial off-site improvements as it is only a single-lane road at the intersection of the subdivision boundary. CAW only has a six-inch diameter main at the northeast corner of the property. Fire mains typically require an eight-inch diameter main. The city of Monmouth annexed one-half of Zajac Road in the 2002 and 2003 Perkins annexation. Therefore, the city can only require half-street improvements to the west side of Zajac, abutting the property as the east side is still in the county. The state fire marshal should review the subdivision prior to full application to Monmouth Planning Commission. And then the city of Monmouth should not have annexed land they cannot access or service. This is currently an inappropriate location for residential development. And then finally, the county will not improve Zajac or Gabanski Roads, or open and improve short Marshay to serve the subdivision inside the city limits of Monmouth. So that was forwarded to us from the Planning Department of Plaskett County at the request of Judge Hyde and their collective. And since that came in, we communicated with the county all this week and the developer to discuss the concerns that they had. And out of that, the, I just received it, we weren't able to, I failed to print it off for you, but I'll just read to you. The director of planning for the county's response, they said that the county is in agreement with your infrastructure improvement suggestions and will support your development, provided we can work out the proper assurance of improvements you have agreed to. There may be a variety of ways to structure the assurances, and we are open to them. I will be in the office through Thursday, and we could talk. So we reached an agreement, and I'll kind of share what that is. And again, I'm kind of stepping forward from the subdivision, but I think the public, it'd be helpful to talk about this stuff ahead of time if you're open.
Let's stop for a second. So a couple things. I want to know for my own clarity, is what jurisdiction does Plaskett County have in regard to the application?
So they do not have jurisdiction to the planning of the subdivision itself. We have, the city of Monmouth has jurisdiction. Because the access to the subdivision is through county roads and access from the county, then there, I wanted them to weigh in, because we collaborate with the county when it comes to these type of developments, because it impacts both county and the city. So it was a benefit to us to work out the directive that needs to happen. So they're, they don't have the final say as to the approval of the subdivision. The city, you as the planning commission, have that authority. But I wanted to, I wanted to share that, just so that we had it on the record, because they did provide it, and I wanted to make sure the county's initial concerns were placed on the record for you to know in your decision-making for tonight.
What conditions did the applicant provide to address?
So, so he's, and we can, can you pull that PowerPoint up?
But that information was not provided in the packet?
It was not, because it came in after. We worked on it after the, after the packet was submitted. And that's, a lot of times will happen whenever we submit the packet, there's, we have to work things out all the way up until Planning Commission. So, but we've worked through some of those issues, and I just wanted to share with those...
In those applications, usually it's a light comment or two, not with a roomful of people with a concern.
Right, right.
So I think the standing here is a little different.
Right. So...
Is it your intent, or the applicant's intent, for us to hear these conditions and rig them in, and then act on the conditions as part of the application?
No, sir. So we've, we've provided the conditions as part of our comments to go with the preliminary plat approval, and it meets the, the conditions of the county. And I'll kind of read that out for the record. And it was part of the email communications that we had, and I've got that publicized. But I can share with you what, what the condition was that we had agreed upon, would be a note on the preliminary plat. And that is, with the submission of civil plans for review by the city, include, they should include designs and assurances for off-site utility, road, and infrastructure improvements necessary to serve the proposed development to be reviewed and approved by the county, which improvements will include water service improvements and road and drainage improvements from the proposed development along Zajac Road to Marshay Road, which, that would include the portion of Gabanski Road between Marshay Connection and the Zajac intersection. And I'll show that here momentarily on the, on the, and I figured it would be easier for me, I've never done this before, but it'd be easier for me since we have a public audience to provide a PowerPoint to kind of address some of the concerns the audience had, and how this will help improve both the county's concerns.
That comment's not there than any comment they will provide on any ETJ?
I'm sorry?
So that comment is almost the same comment they would provide on any ETJ?
Yes, sir. But because their concerns is that Zojac Road... But because their concerns is that Zojak Road is too narrow, similar to short Marche Road, to service any additional traffic in that area. And then the concerns that I have with, those parcels in the county are already being subdivided. And that's part of what I've got in my presentation. I can kind of show how the, how the pattern is going and how this actually would provide a benefit to the area. But if you wouldn't mind, I would just kind of like to step through a few things on the slide deck and then, if you're all right with that.
Yeah, I suppose we can, we can hear it. I'm just not, you know, the thing we've not, they, the folks have not here reviewed it. We've not, as part of the packet, we've not been afforded to digest it, but yet you're at, you're going to ask us to act on it? Is that, is that, is that, is that, I just want to know where we're headed here, the intent. So, we've got information this before, so it wasn't by the public, we have over 20 people that's here.
Okay.
And we didn't review it, did we go ask a question prior to this, when we have quite a bit of public comment?
Okay.
So, I just want to make sure that your, the intent and the applicant's intent is we get to the end, he's going to want to action.
I mean, that's the, that's the intention moving forward.
Okay.
So, so first off, when we were looking at this development, we, even though, so the Maumell Ford was, was considered by resolution a guiding document that we use, and we tend to use that when we're looking at future development inside the city of Maumell. The location in this was considered to be clustered residential. You can go to the next slide, Jason. Which cluster residential is described as being residential lots containing a single permanent living structure, housing one family on smaller parcels or a cluster group configuration. The massing of lots set aside common open space for the benefit of the development and community or to protect environmental sensitive areas. I would say that the proposed development, and you can hit next slide, Jason, the proposed development is more of a, it's, it's not an estate style, which estate lots typically go two to three acres. These are about one acre in size, but they're larger than normal, and they've set aside a significant amount of green space and open space to be sensitive to the surrounding environmental areas. So, it's kind of a mix between low-density and cluster residential. So, I'll go to the next slide, Jason. So, there was concern in the area that no road improvement to Zajak Road was proposed to the south. So, if you look at the black arrow, that's, the developer is proposing improvement to Zajak Road all the way to the north where it intersects with Gabanski and gets to Marche. Running south, the, if you look over on the right of the slide, there's three, three lots that are served by, would be served by that improvement. So, it does not provide any additional benefit to the subdivision here, and those three lots are adequately served by the existing road. I think the, the concern where this came out of is there's lots to the south, those large lots way to the south don't have any access down there, but if you took Zajak Road further to the south, you'll see the light blue area is actually floodway, so there's no way for the road to extend through the floodway and get to those lots. So, there's really no reason for Zajak to be improved to the south. All right, you can go to the next slide. So, there was concerns about increased flooding, and these came in through email over the past week, and I wanted to share those with you as well as the audience. There's, the location on the left is where they've shown Zajak Road to get covered during substantial flooding. And there were comments that additional development is one of the causes of this flooding. But if you'll know, if you'll notice, the location of the arrow, arrow is the direction in which the water is flowing. It's flowing actually from the northeast, flowing towards the bayou. It's not coming from any development from the city. So, at least that's the initial, the initial study that we've looked at. And one of the things that we've noticed in Maumell is Maumell is flooding more than the past. It's not just in these areas. We've had, this past, last year in March, we had several houses flooded that had never been flooded before, and part of that is due to the storm events that we're having. The storms are moving slower, the volume of rain that is coming down is more, and it's causing the systems to get bogged down, and it's causing more flooding. And we've just noticed that throughout the city. You can go to the next slide. So, this shows the extent of the floodplain, which is in the light blue. The purple down below is the floodway. And again, the arrows is the direction of the water flow that flows towards the bayou, again, crossing over Zajak Road. One of the things that would benefit this, that the developer, if he makes the improvement to the roadway, we, we've also included improvements to the drainage, so you can have improved drainage under the road that could help reduce the amount of flooding that would happen over that road and potentially solve that issue. So, that's one of the things that we discussed with the county and the developer has agreed to. And then the hashed area to the south is where this development is, just in, in relation. Can you go to the next slide, Jason? So, there, most of the concerns that we heard is that Zajak and Gabanski Road are not up to standard. So, the, the red circled areas are the approximate extent of where the entrance to the subdivision on the south would be, and then where Gabanski Road connects to Marche Road. At that location at the north, the county has improved the road to that point to meet county standards. So, the developer has agreed to improve Zajak and Gabanski Road in between that area to bring it to county standards so that it does manage. Now, after city, after our evaluation, you know, the, the 21 lots is, does not increase significant traffic. And I know for the folks that live in the county, it would be significant because it is, that's a lot more than what they're accustomed to, and I completely understand. But when we're looking at this, and you can go to the next slide, when you look at the development patterns in this area, you can see that the parcels are being parceled out in long, elongated parcels, slender and moving up. If you actually took all the land and I measured it in the, on Zabanski, and you actually continued to parcel out in that way, then you would likely have the same number of lots that are being proposed in this development. And when those, when those lots are parceled out, they're not making improvements to Zajak Road. So, if lots keep getting parceled out in the county, then there's no mechanism in order to improve Zajak Road for everybody that lives out there. So, one of the things that is of value and one of the, and there's some comments to the, you can go to the next slide, Jason. So, and I, yeah, I'm sorry, I did this very quickly today because I was trying to get, we had a lot of comments come in, so I just wanted to kind of post those and talk a little bit about it. So, one of those is the concern for burden and disruption passed to the existing residents with no benefit, which one of those being, it is very, I mean, it's, it's, it's not very developed in the county, and a lot of people that live out there, they like that natural area, and they don't want that impacted. But also, if a developer comes in and develops and the road is damaged in some form or is left unsta, not up to standard, then the impacts are to the residents there. But based on the agreement with the developer and the county, they've agreed to make those improvements to Zajak Road, so that the residents out there would see a benefit that they normally would not see, because the county doesn't do road improvements in local areas from, at least for the most part, and they're, they're not interested in doing that. Again, the value in tranquility, tranquility and natural beauty, and disagree that development will have a positive effect on property values. The, the proposed development being large estate lots, if, if you compared it to the half-acre lots that he's currently developing at Devo Bend, those, those properties are coming in at a million dollars plus as far as their overall cost. So, typically, when you see houses of that, that value, it tends to lift the values of the properties around it. Now, you can see that increased traffic, they may see that as a, as a deterrent. I can't predict any of that, but there would be disruption during the construction, and that's certainly to be said. Since there's no one within Maumell city limits will be directly affected by this development, what commitments does the city have toward protecting the peace and privacy of the residents who will bear the impact? One of the benefits that we do there is that we do manage the development, and we always make sure that whenever a development is done, that we oversee the development and make sure that the developer is working with the residents, and if there's any concerns from the residents, then they can contact us, and we make sure to be the in-between to help make sure that there's limited impact. Would it not be more appropriate to limit new Maumell subdivisions to areas accessible from within Maumell city limits? So, the city has already shown annexations within areas that have to be accessible by the county. So, if you go to Stone Canyon, that has to be accessed from 365. Maumell, even though it abuts our city limits, the railroad is in between us and we cannot connect to that subdivision directly from Maumell, so you have to go through 60, 365. So, that's just one example where we're having to access property. Now, one of the, the things, and I think a large concern is the further access and how this is going to grow in the area. I mean, ultimately, if the city grows, and we just think long-term, if we think 20, 50 years down the line, how are we going to help protect the residents in that situation? Because when you have large property owners out there, eventually, they want to either sell off their land, or they want to subdivide it and sell it and make money, or there's some, things change. So, this is no different. This property was annexed in 2002, it sat there for that long, and then Mr. Holloway purchased it, and he has the private rights based on the ordinance that we have to build a development. So, while Maumell is not historically forcibly annexed surrounding areas, this situation's arguably worse. We would experience all the negative effects of city development without any of the benefits. Well, again, Zajak Road is proposed to be improved, so you will see a road improvement, you will see drainage improvements, so it is going to be an improvement to the area that normally would not happen with the smaller subdivisions. And then lastly, how will this development impact the White Oak Bayou watershed? This area frequently floods, often causing Zajak Road to go underwater. So, the bayou does back up whenever, I know in 2019, when we had the serious flood, we went out and we tracked all that, and, and it can, it gets pretty bad. That's just shows where the floodplain that we had. But as we shown, showed in the pictures, and go to the next slide, Jason, if you don't mind, this was an arrow photo that was provided by one of the residents that lives out there on Zajak Road, and I just wanted to show it. The hashed area is the proposed development. The bayou, you can see in the distance beyond it. The road floods in the area and they, they're pointing to it, but when you look at the picture that was provided, the flowage path of that water is flowing in the direction of the arrow, and if, if I'm mistaken by that, I'd, I'd be more than happy to hear that tonight. But based on that, if, if the bayou causes it to flood, it would be from a, a substantial flooding event that it would back up to Zajak Road, and that is possible because it is in the floodplain, and that can happen. But during general, I guess what you call urban flooding events where rain events cause flash floods and whatnot, then yes, this area could get currently underwater because of the volume of water that runs from the north running to the south. Again, though, with this development, it is very likely that this issue could be improved and can reduce the, the emergency situation with people being cut off. There is also concerns about the railroad tracks blocking the residences. Now, that is one thing that this subdivision and everybody out there right now will have to deal with, because that is natural, but it's not the only way out. They can go through Marche, go under the interstate, they're not just locked by the railroad tracks, they do have other location. And what's that? What's that?
It blocks both.
Oh, it blocks both? Okay, I'm sorry. All right. So, and I, so I, I apologize for that. So, if it blocks both ways, now, one of the things that I will mention is that the master street plan that was approved by the city, and the county is looking at it as well, I think they've got their master street plan proposed that they're trying to look at. The hope and goal is to eventually have access to Maumell over the bayou in a different location that was previously done. Now, that's an expensive thing, and it's something that, you know, I don't know when or how that would ever happen, but if it does, then you can see on this photo that Marche Road actually goes on the south part of that picture and makes a 90-degree turn to go over, go across railroad tracks. The goal would be actually in the future to be able to have a bi, have a crossing over top the railroad tracks, so you wouldn't have that issue. But yeah, again, if and how that would happen, that was, that's a difficult thing, but we have it on the master street plan as a future plan to be able to consider. So, I just wanted to point some of those things out, I think that had a lot of the concerns that came in, and if I missed anything, I mean, I'd be more than happy to, to speak to that during public comment.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
I'd like to hear from the comments from the.
No problem.
From, from the public, or before we begin ours, if that's okay. Staff concluded the report?
For the rezoning, yes.
Okay. So, we'll go ahead, and I do have a few too here, but I didn't want to get out ahead to the questions of, of, I think our, our audience has been very blighted and, and been waiting, so we want to hear from them. So, the first, the first comment card that I have this evening is from Mr. Reed James. Now, you can come forward, and you need to state your name, your address. So, we have a lot of folks that want to talk, so, and some of you may want to say the same thing. And, and it's completely okay to say, I support whomever that you would like to support and concede that time. So, but if you feel like you should say something else, we're definitely not going to restrict you from that, of course. So, you know, I would appreciate if your comments are somewhat concise and you made a good preparation for tonight, but say, you know, three to five minutes somewhere through there. If we can't get through this, then I'll, I'll have to start kind of moving things along if, if people are just repeating the same thing, and hopefully you would have an appreciation for that. So, that, Mr. Reed, state your name and address, I'm happy to hear you, happy to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Reed James, and I live at 11102 Zajak Road, which is, if you're looking at this plat, which would be right across the entrance to this proposed subdivision. I'm speaking today to voice my strong opposition to the rezoning and replating for Devo Bend Development Property located adjacent to Zajak Road, Pulaski County Road. It's important to note that Zajak Road is the sole access point for this proposed development, and it is not a Maumell city road. The proposed development is for 21 homes, and I believe it'll have a detrimental impact on Zajak Road due to its current condition. Zajak Road is narrow, prone to flooding, and already struggles with two-way traffic. The additional traffic volume from this development would more than double the current levels. Presently, there are 17 property owners on Zajak Road. This number would increase to 39 with the proposed development, placing an unfair burden on Pulaski County Road Department, even though most of the traffic would be from Maumell residents driving in and out of Devo Bend. Maumell street tax dollars would not share in these costs, which is a significant concern for those of us living in Pulaski County on Zajak Road. When I contacted the Pulaski County Planning Commission, they were unaware of this development plan and its reliance on Zajak Road. They seemed alarmed and upset, and clearly neither Mr. Holloway nor the Maumell Planning Commission had fully considered these impacts on their infrastructure, road infrastructure of Zajak Road. As I mentioned before, I live directly across the street from the proposed development at 11102 Zajak. The stormwater, water drainage pattern here for this area is critical to understand because it's different than what was previously explained by, by Scott. Water from the southern end of Zajak Road, if you look down there on the south end of the road, flows northward, crossing a culvert near the proposed entrance to Devo Bend, which is in front of my house. Water from the development itself would drain towards the same culvert and floor, flow northeast towards a wetland area located in the northeast corner of Devo Bend Development, and it's up there marked off as a pond. This wetland area is an essential natural, natural buffer for these stormwaters. From the wetland, the water continues through a culvert headed north onto adjacent private property before flowing into White Oak Bayou. So, it flows off that corner going north across there into the previous. So it flows off that corner, going north across there into the previous, previously described drainage. In my opinion, significant stormwater culverts, bridges, pipes, et cetera, would be needed to mitigate the increased effects of stormwater draining through and from this part of the development. Furthermore, Mr. Holloway's plans to destroy and then transform a wetland on the northeast corner of this development into a pond with a paved walking path around it would significantly disrupt the stormwater drainage flow, worsening the flooding issues already present. The development plans show no comprehensive plan in place to address the increased runoff from the development, which will exacerbate the already frequent flooding. In fact, the only call-out on the plat that has mentioned anything about Zajak Road, say, and I quote, "Offset upgrades to be required and done by others along Zajak Road." And that's up there by the compass in the northwest quadrant of the compass up there. I can confidently and 100% say to the Planning Commission and Mr. Holloway that no one along Zajak Road will agree to pay or upgrade our road to meet this standard called out for on the plat. There is also a critical concern regarding emergency response times. Maumell Fire and Police Services would face extreme delays if they were called to Devo Bend. First responders would need to navigate Highway 365, which leads to Marche Road, an area that often becomes impassable during heavy rain, often submerged by up to three feet of water. The county closes the road when it's that way. Then they'd have to go through the busy train crossing onto the narrow and flood-prone Gabanski and Zajak Road. The narrow width of Zajak Road, often measuring just 16 feet in places, which I verified with a tape measure, it's not 20, it's 16, and its frequent flooding would further complicate emergency responses. This delay could jeopardize the safety of residents in the development who expect timely services from their local fire and police departments. I wonder if the police and fire chiefs are aware of this response situation. For these reasons, I'm asking the Maumell Planning Commission to reject the rezoning and replating request for Devo Bend. There is zero upside for the property owners along Zajak Road. Mr. Holloway should consider a more viable solution, such as building a bridge connecting his development to the other side of White Oak Bayou, so he wouldn't need to use Zajak Road. He should also be required to install proper stormwater drainage and sewer systems for his development that doesn't destroy a wetland. Lastly, if the Maumell Planning Commission approves Mr. Holloway's rezoning and replating request, it should be contingent on providing engineering and permitting for a suitable stormwater drainage plan, conduct a wetland study to ensure compliance with the no net loss of wetlands as provided by the Clean Water Act, and come up with another way for Maumell residents to access the development from a Maumell street before proceeding with this development. Thank you for your consideration.
Mr. Hyatt, is it Jacob?
Yeah.
Jase? And I'm sure your first name. State your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Jacob Hyatt, 5203 Gardner Lane, just off the, I guess, east side of Zajak. I will skip some of my notes, because Reed hit them, and I agree with everything that he did state. I'll kind of breeze through my notes and kind of quickly get the ones that maybe he didn't mention. He'd mentioned the Marche Road, it definitely has heavy flooding. The train tracks, it's also at the crossing, Marche onto Gabanski, it's a very steep crossing, longer vehicles could potentially get stuck. I don't know how long the fire trucks are in Maumell, but it's definitely a concern. If you had a ladder truck, the length of it, it definitely can't take long trailers, or longer vehicles. I spoke with the captain of Oak Grove Fire Department, because it's mentioned that the fire departments work together, mutual aid, and they do in situations of big issues, but they're not first responders. So Oak Grove wouldn't be able to get ahead of Maumell to get to the residents quicker. Secondly, one of the captains in Maumell mentioned that, first, he was against it and thought it was a very bad idea to put the safety of the residents in jeopardy by having the longer access, and the way they're currently divided, Station 2 would provide service to the Devo Bend area. And Station 2 is the one, if I'm not mistaken, by Lake Willistee? Is that correct? Which is even further from that end of Maumell. So they'd be coming from the center of Maumell all the way. I'm assuming that can be remapped and redone, but again, current fire department guidelines would come from Station 2. The negative impacts on our community, so Zajak Road, we all agree the road's not up to standard, it's not great, but it's more than just the road. Like, Zajak, I mean, it's a small county road, and there's people that walk, run, exercise, walk their dogs, walk their children, kids ride bikes down the street, and you can make the road big and pretty, but it's still, the increased traffic is going to eliminate any of that. So all the benefits that Devo Bend Development gets with the walking trails and all that, county residents lose that. We don't have access to our road to walk on and all that. So we're at a loss, as previously mentioned, while the city gets all the benefits. Notice in the agenda, it mentions 210 expected cars per day, which is a great disruption to the current traffic. You'll have the sanitation department, the delivery vehicles, Amazon, going to 21 more houses, there's going to be substantially more traffic. So there's more than just what this residence will provide. School bus, currently, school buses, can't, don't go down Zajak. The county got a limit, they stop at the corner of Zajak and Gabanski, because there's not a safe place to turn around when it's flooded. It's not safe. So students walk to Gabanski every day to get on the bus. So add all the volume of traffic, and it's, again, a safety hazard. Another thing that's important to us in the area is the wetlands. The water does flow, as you indicated in those pictures, but it also is because it backs up and it can't flow out. So the wetlands are growing with the development of White Oak and the other areas beside the baseball fields, the waters, I've been out there almost 20 years, and we flood more and more than we ever had, whether it's the more rain, longer storms, whatever it may be, the additional development's not helping. It's hard to skip my notes, I mean, I just read them. I guess my hope to the council would be that, when you look at this, if you put yourself in our shoes, the development benefits one person, and that's the developer. Holloway's will get all the money, all the income. In theory, the city will get some tax revenue, but not a lot on 21 residences. But the county residents get all the negatives, the increased traffic, the loss of private area, the land value. Currently, I know there's a lot of assumptions with the Maumell forward, that that area's going to be divided out. There's the biggest landowner, his property showed a cluster residential. It's a generational homestead. He's not planning on selling, he's passing to his kids. So just assume that we're all going to parcel our property out. It's a strong assumption that I don't think is fair. We don't want to be annexed in Maumell. Maumell doesn't force it, and I would assume that if you talk to all of us, we're going to be against it. So I don't appreciate the assumption that we're going to be all Maumell residents and parcel out all of our land. So the new development of one-acre lots will, in theory, decrease the value of our land, whether it's dollars and cents, or just the value of inherited land. So I simply ask to consider both sides. Understand that Mr. Holloway has the right to build what he wants to build on his land, but it should be accessed from Maumell and not affecting the entire community that's not even a Maumell resident. That's my highlights. And I guess one other thing I'll add, talking to a few places, there's no evidence of any applications for any of the Devo Bend developments about the wetlands and the impact it would have on it. No studies, no evidence anywhere to be found about any permanent applications, and they're all built right on top of wetlands. So going forward, it'd be nice to see if everything's taken care of and looked at beforehand before we start building. And I'll leave my time there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Allison Hillman. I live at 11704 Zajak Road. I'll keep my comments short. I agree with everything that they said, and you read many of my comments and showed a few photos. I do agree that some stormwater does runoff in the direction that you indicated. However, it doesn't generally cross the road there unless the bayou has already backed up. So you can see the bayou coming through the field. So that water, with all the developments that are happening on the Maumell side over time, has increased over the years. That photo, I have many photos like that, but that particular one I took about eight years ago. So this isn't something that's just happening recently. It's been happening for quite a while. And also, one of my main concerns is, you know, if the road is widened, how does that impact our properties as well? Because, you know, we choose to live out there because we want to live in a rural area. We want to live on a small road. If somebody comes in and improves the road, that's not necessarily a benefit to us if it's taking our properties. My property in particular is lined by trees. We have a lot of privacy. I love being able to, you know, look out my front door and not see any other houses, and I have that protection from the trees. Well, is the road and the right-of-way going to take away, like, what I deem the most valuable part of living in the area? Lastly, it's just the concern of just the uptick in traffic and this development. It looks like, you know, there's obviously going to be walking trails and everything for those residents, but as Jake said, you know, we use our road as a community, and we're going to be losing that. I know that having high-end housing development at the end of our road would lead one to think that our property values would go up. I think most of our neighborhood would say that we're not interested in selling our homes, and so that's not really, you know, it's not monetary value that we're looking for. We're losing the value of living in a rural area. And that's all I've got.
Thank you very much for attending. Mr. Bonancik?
It's going to be hard to follow that lady.
If you would, state your name and address for the record, sir.
I sure will. My name is Samuel Bonancak. I live on 11313 Zajak Road. We have 120 acres, and we, six generations out there, my family's had that probably for 100 years. Not interested in selling. If you want to improve my property, you know, it's going to cost me money, because you're also increasing my tax liability. And I don't appreciate that, and I don't appreciate this developer calling me all the time, trying to lowball me into selling my property, like he purchased the property he's got now. You know, that's unconscionable, and I don't appreciate it. Tell your buddies to leave me alone, all right?
Let's keep our comments focused to the development. You know, the issue with him can be handled outside this. This being it. If we have any comments, we're not directing comments to the developer. The applicant has a right to be here. He'll have the opportunity to speak as well, too. We're happy to hear any concerns you have over the development. We're happy to hear that, but not any personal rhetoric and back and forth between the applicant, if you would, please. Understand the concern. Mr., oh, excuse me, Mrs. Melody Sugg?
Well, I really can't follow that. My name's
Yes, you just state your name and
My name is Melody Sugg. I'm at 11524 Zajak. I agree with most everything that's been said so far tonight, and what I'd like to amplify, I know it's just one small part of many issues, but I'm sure for many of you, it's important for you to be able to walk out your door and go for a walk or a run, especially when we had this nice weather. Many of us work from home. So that's me. I work from home, I'm stuck on a computer, video calls all day. I love walking out my door, walking down that long gravel driveway, and walking down the street and back. They sometimes comment that they see me do that. It's true, I do three or four times a day. I also walk for exercise, I run there. I know that's not as important as a lot of the other issues brought up, but it's what I can bring to share, and it's not a small number of cars. And people in houses like that, you know they're going to have two to four cars each. It's a lot. And if you put that kind of traffic on our road, I don't know how you widen it, that's a different issue. But if you put that many more cars on our road, I can't walk out my street and go for a walk, like everyone can in Maumell with the sidewalks. But I can do that now. It's safe, it's easy, it is a very narrow road, but I've never had any problems walking there. And so I'm concerned that this development would take away my quality of life, and the same for other people here. I would never purchase a home where I can't walk out the door and go for a walk. And I've passed up on homes that I wanted, or was at least looking at buying, because they were too close to busy roads for me to be able to take a walk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs.
Good evening. Good evening. My name's Derek Sugg. I live at 11524 Zajak Road. That was my wife. I'm not as good a speaker as her, so bear with me. I do want to start with, I agree with everything that's been said tonight, so I'm not going to go into all of that again. I do want to make two main points, which I think, the first one, and if you would, you know, take my email and put it into the record, it covers all of this. I think y'all have the best interest of Maumell residents at heart, and these will be Maumell residents. And all the problems that we deal with every day, gladly, because we get to live in the environment that we do, they won't have. They will be living in a community of small acreage, and they will have to deal with the fact that the train will stop and block all the railroad crossings for more than an hour. You miss work. You're late for work. Your kids won't get to school on time. If it's flooding, how do your kids get to school? They don't, they have to miss a day. You can fix some of this stuff, but you can't fix it all by widening Zajak. All you're going to do is have all of us lose some land, lose valuable trees to us. There are some 100-year-old trees right by the road. That's the problem, is that the people that move there are going to experience all the downsides we do have today, and they're going to be your residents. So I ask you to think about that before you approve putting Maumell on that side of the bayou. It just doesn't make sense unless you're going to build a bridge connecting both sides of Devo. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sugg. Carson Campbell?
I'm going to say my comments for the replating.
Is that good? Mr. Charles Kohler?
I'm the president of Marche. I live on Lone Pine Road.
We need you to state your name and your address.
I'm sorry, I'm Charles Kohler. I live at 14800 Lone Pine Road, which intersects Marche Road.
Thank you.
All right, now, first of all, what's going to happen here, guys, all this traffic, there's not a lot of traffic, but the, like, I agree with what everybody says, and I can't shame him for wanting to develop that property out there. I can't shame him for that. But he's on, he's on, he's not working with our community, he's working with your community. And what he needs to do is remember, this is a historic community. It founded Maumell. It did. This is actually West Marche. It is, and everybody out here from Marche knows that. This is West Marche. This is. Now, the flooding will continue if he gets his way to develop what he wants to do. It will continue all the way up to 365. If y'all drive on 365 up by the Blue Hill area, that water backs up into the houses, all of that. Only thing stops it is 365. But it continues all the way over to Gabanski, I mean, not Gabanski, but Shemansky Road, all through there. It backs all the way up, and people are just out of luck. And it's nothing going to do but make it worse. Anything you develop down there on those lakes, the Devo, the Pittman, the Johnson, all that, there's three lakes there. A lot of you guys don't know, y'all just call this Devo, because that's what it is, he's showing there. When you make that, when that water comes down through, that water's going to go all the way back up to the houses that are affecting everybody around the Blue Hill and the upper end of Marche. No one's looked at that. All the pictures we saw, it just affects that little area. They don't look at the big picture. And I'm sorry, but I have to disagree with what the man wants to do. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for attending.
I'm shaking just a little bit, so bear with me. But my name is Bob Wood. I live at 11120 Zajak Road, next door to Ricky, who lives back here, the two doors down from the gentleman that spoke earlier. To give you a little bit of background on me, I lived in Maumell for 23 years. I raised my children on Stone ledge Drive. If you went to 81 Stone ledge Drive and looked at the improvements that I made while I lived there, additional driveways, storage building to compensate for the slope, et cetera. I raised my kids out here. They went to gymnastics, they went to the gymnasium. I've used the walking tracks, I played pickleball out here, I'm at the senior center of membership. I love Maumell. It's a great place to grow up, to live with your kids. It's a great place to grow up, to live with your kids. When my kids got older, uh, I needed more room, so I happened to luck on to a house on Zajac Road. I lived here for 23 years. I've lived on Zajac Road for over 20 years. The first thing I experienced when I moved into that house, um, was flooding water. It flooded into the garage. That's on the county side, not on the side over here where he's trying to build a subdivision. My background is engineering, construction. I've built numerous large constructions on military basis. I've dealt with flooding, I've dealt with foundation control, civil engineering. You can't build on a puddle of water and that's what that swamp is. There's water out there continuously. My first experience with my house flooding, I took the initiative to put in a 50-gallon drum to collect water, to put a float pump in, to pump the water from that drum to the street about 150 feet away, just to protect my house where it's at right now. If he develops that property, he needs to address everything related to flooding and anything else that's gonna affect not only those houses. What this gentleman said is, "Well, maybe the weather gets bad." Well, what if it does? One time, that subdivision floods and look at those people. You look at any property where it's flooded and what those people have lost. It's insurmountable. Um, I just want you to know that we have a problem out there and I don't feel like it's being addressed. And I will say one more thing. I was on the original planning commission for this community. I've been in those shares, I know what people deal with. We had flooding problems back then with houses here in Mau Mel. It's a catastrophe. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, I don't have any further comment cards on this item, so we'll open up for questions and comments from, uh, the Commissioners' address staff or the applicant who is present this evening.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, John.
Mr. Grummer, you had a, you had a PowerPoint a little earlier. I just wanted to clarify where the improvements, where the applicant's gonna do the improvements on the road. If you can go back to that, Mr. Line, please. Um, Ford?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. Right there, the red dot, Gabanski down to Zajac. You said earlier that you were gonna take it a little further south. Is it going in front of the Chuy's all the way down? I guess the east side of your development? Yeah, please, please, if, or, or, I'm just, I just want to clarify what you're gonna be improving.
No, no problem. Eric Holloway, 116 Timberland Trail, Mau Mel. We come down, I think, I, he probably had to pull up the development plan. We, we go down just to the entrance of our development. After that, it becomes the private drive that it is today to service the, the lands that are to the south.
Okay, so you won't be improving south of the red dot, red entrance, correct?
No, leave it as the drive that it is today, yes.
Okay. What improvements do you plan on doing for Zajac?
Leave the offer that I've made, but I, we agreed that we'd do whatever the county requires, but I offered to widen the road to 22 feet, which is basically what we'd be tying into when we get to Marchay Road. Uh, the area, if we can look at the area, just to discuss the flooding real quick since that was a big topic tonight, um, I would actually agree with most of the audience that, um, it's, Scott, it's not really a headwater storm that creates that flooding, it's more of a backwater that happens with the, with the bio. I've been watching the bio for about 20 years. The bio takes about, depending on how, how saturated we are, it, it takes anywhere from 24 to 36 hours to reach its peak. So, I, I do think that anything that floods Zajac Road is, is upstream watershed that, that has, that's made its way downstream and it, it's probably not typical that, that a headwater stream, you know, would flow, would flow over the road. It would just be a backwater event that, that does that. But, I've looked at that, um, when we do the widening on the road, it, there's a section there that the road dips down pretty low below the floodplain. It's not a very long section. You can kind of see it, it's in blue as you go up and I will be able to lift that area out of the floodplain and it will never flood again once, once I fix that. Um, it's really not so much that the culvert is undersized, it's just that the road gets down below what the backwater happens in that area. So it's, it's a fairly simple fix, it's, with respect to that road right there. Uh, I do agree that Marchay Road has problems and, and the county came in and did silly, some silly fix and, and never quite really got what needed to be done there. They kind of widened a bridge that really didn't fix the problem in any way, so, so that's, that is a mess that needs to happen. That's kind of further away, but it is part of, I, I agree, it's a little bit of part of the, uh, initial response, but there are many other ways to get into the development.
One, which one?
No, I mean, through Marchay lateral or, are there, are there other ways to get around the flooding when it occurs?
Okay, okay, we're gonna have, we're gonna have orders. Every person had, had the opportunity to speak, that wanted to speak and, and, and as far as I'm concerned, I did not allow interruption from the applicant and we're gonna provide him the same courtesy. Although you may not agree with what he is saying, you'll provide him the respect that this platform provides him, or you'll be asked to leave. Just want to make sure that's clear.
Just to confirm, the county will be approving of your...
Yeah, no, and then about construction, I also offered the, a maintenance bond for two years of the entire road, not just what I widened.
So, one of the things I discussed with the county was that as part of the preliminary plat, uh, he'll need to show the extent of Zajac Road and Gabanski, uh, the improvement on may, maybe a second page or something that is tied to this plat and he would have to provide with the civil plans that he would submit to the city for review. He would also have to submit, um, the improvements to Zajac Road and Gabanski, uh, so that that can be reviewed by the county and, uh, the county, uh, and that doesn't have to be determined before the meeting, uh, the, uh, Van McLendon, the planning director for the county, said, uh, you don't have to provide for the assurance today, but before the civil plans are approved, there just needs to be some assurance, um, whatever vehicle that is to provide to the county that those improvements are gonna be made.
And if I may, I wanted, I wanted to address zoning, if, if I can have just a little...
Let's stay on the road for a little bit.
Okay.
There's, there's concerns. So, you know, we got a letter, which was March 20th and today is a week later and, and then you, you guys have been going back and forth and, uh, and he's still, uh, not, uh, he's still not satisfied, it doesn't appear, although there's been some phone communication. Or do you have an email?
Yes, sir.
What has been, what has been, my confusion about this issue coming this is like, I, I'm not for sure what you've agreed to, Mr. Holloway, or what Van want, or Mr. McLendon wants, and that is not clear. So, if, if he is requiring some specific improvements, is he gonna make you take it to the 50? Is he gonna make it to the 25? I don't know what he, what he's requiring it to do. My, if we're gonna tie these two together, which appears as where we're headed, so, you know, if we're gonna tie, if, if, if it is approved or if the application is, is that we don't have anything before us tonight regarding what, uh, concessions, I don't know, that may not be the right word, or what is gonna actually be required? And then you're okay with that? We're just saying, oh, we just approved by the county. Well, maybe, you know?
I think, I think the best thing that I could do, you know, you know that I'm not necessarily tied to this improvement through the city's approval, but I'm, I'm conceding to do the improvement and allowing the city to make that a contingent on my filing of plat. So I have to satisfy the county's requirement, whatever that may be, before I can file a plat. And I put that plat note on my, on my plat.
But the final plat does not come back before this commission?
But it does, it does have to be signed by the city planner. Or, or by the, the planning commission.
It would have to be signed by me if I'm still on that...
Yes, director, or whoever the director of the planning commission is.
But it wouldn't have to come back?
But it would have to. For me to do that, based on the, the bill of assurance, which I think they wanted that in, in it as well, I would have to satisfy the county's requirement for Zajac Road and Gabanski Road.
How would we know that these constituents would be happy with those requirements?
Well, and again, it's, it's not about being happy, it's that it meets the requirements of the county and the city when it comes to the design of that road. So it's, it's meant to, uh, be the proper width for a local road, uh, which is safe enough for two-way traffic in order to pass, uh, without having to pull off the road. And then the other side is making sure that the drainage improvements are adequate. Uh, so this is gonna be open ditch, it won't be curb, uh, it'll be just like county, uh, county local road.
And I, and it, just because it was said, the word improvement district was said a few times and, and I think somebody was concerned that I was gonna pass some of this cost on to them. I have no intention of doing that. I actually called when I heard that word and I intend to incur every bit of that cost to myself. This will not be a, a, a cost that's passed on to the neighboring landowners. This is a development I'm doing. I, I agree with the fact that I would be the one, um, making the profit off of the development, so it, it should be something that I take care of.
So is the intent, uh, so we got 50-foot mackey order, right?
Yes.
That's it. So then, 10 of those improvements through there and dealing with that drainage, although I, I do understand the difference between the, the floodplain backwater event and what happens in stormwater over range situation, but, uh, that would be required of you to do that development within that 50-foot order?
Yes.
Because it will be on the private side and you will not have condemnation, right?
Yeah, and it, to get to 22 feet and a 50 foot is not a, not a hard thing to accomplish. I also have to bring an eight-inch water line from, uh, Gabanski all the way to my development, which is something I worked out with COW about a year ago. They're gonna bring a 12-inch all the way up short Marchay, I'm gonna take an eight-inch all the way down, uh, Zajac Road. Which I'll do adjacent to this widening.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah, you bet.
Mr. Holloway, one of the concerns that we've heard is with the width of the road and emergency vehicles coming down and even the school bus, and I happen to drive a school bus years and years ago. With the circle that you're showing at the entrance to that neighborhood, I'm guessing that that would be a sufficient diameter and width and everything that, A, a fire truck or a school bus or the trash truck could all come down there and make a U-turn and loop right out.
We have to prove that to the, the fire marshal with any development, so he will look at that and we will both, uh, make sure that it meets the, the recommended, uh, turning radiuses for, for both the, I mean, really, if it meets them, it meets the trash truck, but, yes. We, that is the intention of that turnaround. Uh, I put it there, it, it works well with a gated community, too, to do that, so that anybody that can't get through the gate can turn around and it, and it will create a turnaround at the end of the road that doesn't exist today. Thank you.
So, the, the, Scott, the thing about the, the rezone here, we're, we're mix-matching here a little bit, maybe we need to focus in. So, rezone is to R1 from PRD, which is, is the, the most restricted as far as density that we have, we're mixing the, the thing about the rezone is that, is, is the, these improvements are all, the only note that's on the plat, i- is the rezone going to be tied? You can't do that. You can't tie the rezone, the, the, the notes on the improvement have to go with item four, right?
That's correct. It'll be with subdivision, so we're a little ahead of ourselves on the, on the note.
Yeah, so, you know, going from the PRD to R1, for these folks, that would be the better of, of keeping the zoning existing where it is today, so, and then we can, we can tackle some of those notes on.
Correct.
So, um, so I don't want to get too, too bogged down to that. I, I did make some notes regarding what lands and things like that are more appropriate, uh, addressed on item four than they are the rezone, so, you know, I, I think we need to probably hear and act on that item as a rezone and then, uh, hear the proposed preliminary plat. So, as it sits right now, the development is PRD, uh, which has an assortment of, of additional higher densities available to it by code and, uh, the developer is going to, to R1, um, and that's what we need to focus on and act on and move forward and hear item four.
Just, just, Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to explain why I submitted to, to R1, if that is allowed.
Sure, sure, go ahead, Robert.
Um, the purpose of going to R1 is really as much to protect the residents of my future development if it were to pass. You want to set a precedent for how this area is going to develop. I thought PRD was, gave too much flexibility to other kinds of developments and R1 would be the appropriate protection both for this development on all the, the rural areas that, that surround it. So that, that was, I just thought it was a more appropriate zoning and I thought that, um, anybody that would purchase in this area would feel more comfortable with the fact that anybody that developed around it would kind of, i- if they were within the city or within, uh, an ETJ that we can enforce, that it would be, um, considered, the fact that we are R1 instead of a, a less restrictive PRD. And that was my, my thinking.
And just a reminder to the Commissioners that when you form your motion, it's a recommendation to City Council.
Yeah, I understand. Uh, let's see, Chief, I don't know if I'm sure if this, the emergency access is more appropriate for the, for the, probably is more appropriate for the preliminary plat. I don't see him here, so...
Uh, Chief Eaton's one comment, well, on the entry area was, of course, that any, you know, almost wide enough to get a, a tower truck through and also any curbs in there would have to be mountable and that's, you know, typically what you see on a roundabout, so, um, the turn radius, if it's not all the way there, you still have the mountable curb to come around on it and that'd be the same thing with sanitation.
I was gonna ask him how, how the, how's the, how's the RAM model, I think that's the model they're using?
Correct.
How it addresses the railroad and he's not here to answer that, so. I don't know that it does, altogether, so. It might, I don't know. I, I'm being presumptuous and I don't know, that's, that's why he's, he's not here to be able to answer that question.
Chairman, he... I can tell you didn't require a secondary access, if that's what you were gonna ask.
Yeah, I was aware of that. I was just curious on the response time with the, with the railroad. Meaning that if the, if it's blocked, assumption is that there's not, it's not blocked, is that the train comes through, you still have the 10-minute return time comparison that was done, so, uh, he's a very competent man, so I, I will take him at his word that he presented at some division committee, so.
We argue when they, when they closed short Marchay, that they put a temporary gate up, so that if the, if it is blocked, emergency vehicles and ambulances, whatever, to all the residents in that area now can have, uh, access through that short Marchay gate.
That, that question was asked and I, and I, I think that's more appropriate on number four. It will be required.
Okay.
I, I don't know how the county's going to address that with you altogether.
Sure.
But either that or something's coming off the hinges, more than likely, if something's burning down. It's probably the same way that happened today, you know? If the house is on fire and Oak Grove can't get there and I don't think the city of Mau Mel is gonna sit there and watch a house burn to the ground.
No, no, no.
So, whether it be in Devoe or, or outside, I think they would pitch in and help.
No, and they, they're MOU, they can be the first response. I mean, they, they both...
That's my understanding as well, too.
Yeah, okay.
So, just because there's a gate there, I don't think they'll let a house burn to the ground.
No, no.
Anyway, I think that trick can rip out quite a bit.
Yeah.
And, and I will add, uh, as, so you have, uh, land out by the interchange that will eventually develop out. Things are developing down Wide Oak Crossing quite, uh, fast, so the, uh, the city plans are to place a third station. There's already in, uh, talks to have one closer to the, uh, third interchange at Wide Oak Crossing. So, in the future, there will be, uh, the, the ability to have faster response to that area. It's not there now, but that is in the future plan.
Chair, entertain a mo, if, if there's any other questions, we, we entertain a motion. Again, this is just, uh, voting on the zoning and then we'll, we'll, we'll hear the, the proposed preliminary plat item, uh, in the next, uh, for the next agenda item, so the chair would entertain a motion if there's no other comments.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion for a due-pass recommendation for RZ 25-1, Devoe Bend Lake Estates rezoning.
Any other, any other questions, comments?
No.
Second, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Hearing a first and a second, the commission will now act on the rezone of 25-1 for Devoe Bend Lake Estates rezoning. All those for the rezoning signify by saying yes?
Yes.
All those no, motion passes. Primarily, I think, for the audience, uh, that's out here tonight and hearing this item is that we're providing, we don't know what will come next, uh, not even the next agenda item or, or what will be in the next 10 or 20 years, but we've provided the, the most stringent zoning requirement that the city has to offer. So, that's why you probably heard a unanimous vote here, more than likely, is because they're, from an offering of a developer, at some point in time, somebody's gonna buy this property and they're gonna move forward with it and by right, they have the access to do that and, uh, as such, we've provided a, a zoning, uh, that is the most strict that we have to offer with the city, so.
So, uh, Mr. Chair, just for the, uh, the, uh, the audience that's here, um, this was a recommendation to City Council, so it'll go to City Council for three readings.
Yes.
Uh, the first reading will be, uh, on Monday, April the 7th at 6:00 PM. Uh, the second reading would be Monday, April 21st at 6:00 PM and then the third and final And then the third and final reading to determine the rezoning would be Monday, May fifth at six PM. So public is certainly welcome to attend those city council meetings and, and discuss the rezoning to City Council. But the subdivision, which is the next item, would actually stay with the planning commission.
It stays here. Thank you, Scott. It was a recommendation of the City Council. I don't think I said that in my comments. So now we'll hear on item four for subdivision twenty-five dash three, which is Devoe Bend Lake Estates. And, and one thing about this, Scott, coming back is that the, yeah, this would be contingent. I, I seen it. Let me continue. So we'll hear now here, item number four for subdivision twenty-five dash three for Devoe Bend Lake Estates. This is a proposed preliminary approval for twenty-one lot, single subdivision, detached subdivision with private streets. And staff report?
So let me get to my staff report, Mr. Chair. And also, just for clarification, this action for number four on the subdivision plat will be contingent upon, as you mentioned earlier, of the approval by City Council of the rezoning. If the rezoning fails, then this preliminary plat fails as well.
Understood.
All right, so. So the, the proposed project area is forty-eight point one five acres. The average lot size is one point three four acres. It's currently zoned PRD and your previous recommendation was for approval to a rezone of R1, which would be under contingency. The number of existing lots are two and the number of proposed lots for the subdivision are twenty-one. The lots per gross acre are approximately point four four with a land use of single family detached. So the proposed project meets the current land use of single family. Open space proposed is thirty-two point seven seven percent. So the staff analysis, the proposed twenty-one lot, single family subdivision plus, on forty-eight, plus or minus acres with average lot sizes of one point three four acres and fifteen acres of open space maintains the character of the surrounding county landscape. The buildout of the subdivision would add roughly two hundred and ten vehicle trips a day to Zajak Road, which is a eighteen to twenty foot wide county road with flooding issues north of the proposed subdivision. The applicant proposes an internal trail system over sidewalks, which would be a better fit for the surrounding area, utilizing the trails for access to White Oak Bayou and future trail systems. Concerns on the roadway into the subdivision are understandable. However, staff feels the low density of the proposed subdivision will have minimal overall impact once built out. A full build out of the subdivision using R1 standards could yield a hundred and thirty lots. So the proposed twenty-one large estate lots would be considered the highest and best use of the area, considering its location to surrounding farmlands and wetland areas. The lack of wastewater minimizes the ability to build more densely in the, in this current, in this area currently. Public comments received. We went through those on the previous items, so we discussed those. A large, as mentioned, I'm not gonna go back through the public comments because we've already kind of went through all of those. City, city engineer comments is contingent upon his approval of the drainage in civil plans. The fire department to ensure that entrance to the neighborhood meets the turning radius of the tower, obstruction should be mountable. Public Works stated that sanitation has no concerns with servicing the area. There were no comments from the permits. Enter G had no comments. CAW, as mentioned earlier, he's gonna be required to extend an eight inch water main to this property, which will also benefit the surrounding residents that live along that, that pathway for fire suppression. North Little Rock wastewater, Devoe Bend Lake, located on Zajak Road north of White Oak Bayou in Devoe Bend. They have no objection to the replat. Wastewater currently is for individual septic systems due to lot sizes. Summit Utility, please add a note to the general note specifying that the tracks can also be used as utility easements. And then AT&amp;T had no, no comments. County Planning, as mentioned, they did provide their letter originally and then working with them. And I'll go back through and I'll read the comment that came from the Director of Planning for the county. So after speaking to Eric, he is okay with committing to improvement from his entrance on Zajak Road to the Marshay Road intersection. Let's see. All right. I apologize. Give me one second. So the Director McLendon on March twenty-fifth at one fifty-three PM stated the county is in agreement with the infrastructure improvement suggestion to Zajak Road and Gabanski Road as well as the water improvement and will support your development, provided we can work out the proper assurance of the improvements you have agreed to. There may be a variety of ways to structure the assurances and we are open to them. So with that part of staff comments, and I'll just kind of move to that. Proposed internalized pedestrian circulation system in the form of paved pathways may be substituted for sidewalks along streets upon the request of the applicant. So he is requesting the planning commission approval of internalized pathways versus sidewalks inside the development. And that's shown on the preliminary plat. And then section seventy dash one thirty-two, whenever a proposed subdivision abuts partially dedicated or constructed public street, the developer shall provide the minimum of half the required improvements and right of way. Staff acknowledges the county may request additional improvements to Zajak Road, not directly abutting the proposed subdivision. Staff recommends contingent approval of the preliminary plat pending further review by city and county of Zajak Road. With any additional offsite improvements impacting this plat, if required, be submitted to planning commission for approval via an amended preliminary plat. Now, that was my comments from the staff meeting. And after discussion with Van, we agreed upon a plat note. So first off, the note be added to the plat and the note be added to the bill of assurance and state that with the submission of the civil plans for review by the city, include designs and assurances for offsite utility, road and infrastructure improvements necessary to serve the proposed development to be reviewed and approved by the county, which improvements will include water service improvements and road and drainage improvement from the proposed development along Zajak Road to, and I had put, and I mistakenly put Marshay lateral, but no, it's to Marshay connection at the railroad tracks. So that would be a plat note to be added to the plat as well as that note would be added into the bill of assurance. And then, and typically, just for the audience, whenever a preliminary plat comes through planning commission, it is a preliminary approval and it's contingent upon both city and engineering review of the civil plans, which are not done right now. Any studies and plans typically happen after the preliminary plat and then the city engineer has to approve those and they have to meet our, the ordinance. So that, those plans would come later and then before they're approved, those assurances for the offsite improvements would be provided to the city and to the county for approval. And that, I believe, concludes my comments. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary plat contingent upon engineering staff and commissioner comments.
We have two comment cards on this item that's been submitted this evening. The first is Carson Campbell.
My name's Carson Campbell. I live at one 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 nine Zajak Road. I want to point out two things quickly before I get to my other comments. The direction on the flooding and the flooding in general, my brother's a geologist for the highway department. We've been looking at White Oak Crossing for a long time. We cannot believe that y'all are letting people build houses there. And the destruction of that existing wetland and there not being anywhere to soak up the water is what's causing more water to back up and cross over to Zajak Road, which is why there's more flooding there than there was historically because of things that are happening in Monmel. And then the road improvement is not an improvement for us because we don't want more traffic, so we don't need the improvement. Improvement's only for one person. Anyway, I own a five acre homestead directly north of this planned development and east of the wetland where Mr. Holloway plans to build his house. I appreciate you guys taking your time to hear what I have to say. You've already heard the many comments of my neighbors regarding the stress this new development will take on our neighborhood's infrastructure as well as that of Monmel, which I think are valid. So I'd like to focus on the issues that are particular to me. But first, I want to point out the imbalance in power in this room. As we who are not citizens of Monmel, but rather Pulaski County residents, must plead our case in front of a board of members whom we did not elect, have no accountability, no accountability to us, while the, on the other hand, every reason to acquiesce to Eric, with whom you have an extensive relationship. Therefore, I and others have invited some of our family members and friends who are Monmel citizens here tonight. So there are constituents in the room. And not that I would hope that it would take this to make you do the right thing, but people are here and watching. I moved to Marshay less than a year ago and when I did, Eric was one that, was the first of my neighbors to reach out to me and I greatly appreciate that. He welcomed me to use the woods and the bayou and I would hate to lose that. Not a week after this, I was invited to a block party and was introduced to the remainder of my neighbors, which was a blessing. Since then, I've fallen further in love with my new home and the people surrounding me. Looking out over the bayou, I enjoy the most beautiful sunsets every night. I'm surrounded by abundant nature. I love looking across Gus's pasture at his cattle. I just couldn't ask for a better place to live. I never thought I would get to live somewhere so beautiful. I know that Eric sees the beauty in this place as well. He wants to build his home here and I do not blame him and I would welcome him as a resident neighbor. But contrary to the way I see this land and wish to change it as little as possible, he wishes to capitalize, capitalize upon it for his own gain. I understand that he paid for it. It is his land and he wants to put it to good use. But we just do not see eye to eye on what he wants to do. He tells us that his development will make our property values increase. But what I guess he doesn't understand is that I and I think my other neighbors as well do not value our homes with dollars and cents. The value of my property is based upon how many stars I can see at night, by how many frogs I can hear and the number of times I see alone coyotes linking across my yard. The value of my property recently skyrocketed due to the calls of an Albin hearing over the past week. And I doubt it will stick around once the trees are cut down to make room for twenty-one and a half acre plots. No, he will make the value of my property decrease. One of the worst specific issues for me is that he wishes to put a roundabout right on the edge of my property. It appears to have no purpose and so I reached out to him personally, but he said he likes it, that it is staying and that it is in case my neighbor or I want to be a part of his community. I reached out to my other neighbor, Justin, who hasn't built yet, and I'm not gonna take it upon myself to speak for him, but I don't think Eric should plan on that happening. I personally left the city limits due in part to city planning commissions and specifically chose this property because it was not in Monmel and does not have an HOA. Getting annexed or changing that in any way is definitely not in my plans and I plan to be here a very long time. I know how frustrating it is to have others dictate what you can and cannot do on your own property and I'm sure Eric doesn't like it any more than me. But sometimes simply because you can do something doesn't mean that you should. When I lived in Little Rock, I had a permit that legally allowed me to burn leaves, but didn't because my neighbors asked me not to because it smoked up their house. Sometimes being neighborly is more important than being in the right. And putting a roundabout smack against my property line is not a neighborly thing to do and I very strongly hope that that doesn't happen. I know that Eric can change his mind. I've heard that he changed where he wants to put his house, originally high on land overlooking the bayou to now almost down in it, in the floodplain. I'm not so sure about the wisdom of that decision. I do hope that he changes his mind again and perhaps there are some people here who can convince him or compel him to do so. I don't think it is wise to build homes in the floodplain, backing up stormwater for everyone else. I don't think it is wise for Monmel to put this island community across the bayou for which they have no infrastructure or access. I don't think it is wise to alter the existing population density of this community with so many smaller lots. And I don't think that it is wise to anger your neighbor by, for instance, bopping a roundabout right on his property line, among other things. Eric has been very open with me, which I appreciate and I hope he continues to do so. Now I'm being open about what I want as well. I've told him that I wish him success, which is true, but how each person chooses to measure success is entirely up to himself. I wish both Eric and the city of Monmel the best, but this is not good for me, nor in the grand scheme of things, anyone else but him. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jacob Hyatt for item four?
All right, sorry to come back to you. Jacob Hyatt, fifty-two oh three Gardner Lane. And I was honored to be respectful of it earlier. I had a few questions. Can I ask questions here? Is that okay?
Do you have any comment first?
Yes. Mr. Holloway mentioned that he would pay and incur the cost to upgrade the road. On the plat, it specifically says that that will be put on the owners of Zajak Road. So if that plat is finalized, I feel like, I'm not a lawyer, but any lawyer could probably say that is more official than talk. So I want to make sure that that's understood. The raising Zajak Road, yes, that would help with the flood spot. But if this committee hearing was proposed to all of Marshay, you'd have a whole lot more people because all of Marshay, I appreciate this gentleman coming out, he's not directly on Zajak, but he's in Lone Pine and he understands that all of Marshay floods. By raising Zajak, it's knocking up anything with emergency access or anything. You're fixing one spot and it's one of the smaller of all the flood areas leading up to that area. You have a, a turnout because of Zajak Road, but all of Marshay would be affected by the two hundred and ten cars per day through a flooded area. So just, I want to make sure we realize it's more than just one little spot on Zajak Road that's affected. One other thing, in the description, it says that the integrity of the area will be maintained. The preliminary hearing said that any tree, I believe, over twelve inches would have to be approved before it's cut down. We're putting in a seventy foot wide driveway in the middle of this area. That's gonna mess up the integrity, whether you believe it or not. One other comment before I'd like to ask a question, if I could read my handwriting. Oh, the, the waterways, there's some familiar faces on the White Oak Bayou Conservation Committee and this committee and, and as the developer, there's familiar faces on that committee and in here. And I just question if the engineer and all that, all these designs are conflict, have no conflicts of interest in these decisions. That's all my comments and just a couple of questions, just because I'm not familiar with how this works. Scott mentioned it. This is a preliminary plat, so the final plat, is there any more discussion on this before the plat would be finalized?
So typically whenever, if, if there's no substantial changes from the preliminary plat to the final plat, then staff can review the final plat and approve it. So that's where the discussion's like you mentioned about the note saying that residents that are out there, it's been placed on record tonight that the developer has agreed to take on all those costs. So that will be changed on the preliminary plat. So anything that comes out of this meeting, those modifications will be made and then we'll make sure that they're made on from a staff, a staff review.
Okay.
I don't think he answered your question. No, it does not have to come back before the commission.
You, you mentioned that, that's slightly confused, so.
Yeah, it's like I'm, I need to make that clear, is that from a preliminary plat, unless, unless, unless this commission requires it, which we've not done in the past, but we, I, I assume that we can make it a condition is that he would, the final plat has to come back in before it moves forward.
I mean, I think there's a lot of people in the room that appreciate that, just have a chance to review it one more time. Another thing, the city engineer, is that independent contractor, is that the engineer of this development?
It's currently a third party.
Okay.
The, the thing, the, the way the process goes, it's a, it's a preliminary development plan. So as it, or excuse me, in this case, preliminary plat. So as the preliminary plat is, is submitted, there's not been any engineering plan, wetland identification, some of the others, Corps of Engineers identification. Now, he may have taken it upon his own accord in preparation of the preliminary plat. If you do your due diligence and you're a good developer, you typically do that and he typically does. How much of that he went into, it, it's not required. So he, he went through it. So those development plans, those, I said, the, the engineering plans level has to be submitted and it has to be approved. And you're right, we're, he's not circumventing any Clean Water Act requirement that was accused tonight. We don't permit that.
Right.
So he have to do his due diligence to go through and identify the, the wetlands where those areas are identified. But he's completely out of floodplain, so he, he didn't ask to rezon that. So then he currently cannot have development in the floodplain, period, based upon the application tonight.
Okay. The contingencies, the list of contingencies, one was mentioned, it wasn't, nothing would happen until Short Marshay was opened? Who decides which contingencies this will hinge on?
Short, Short Marshay is not a jurisdictional item of this, of the, of the city for that matter.
Right.
It's in a county.
Okay.
And I asked a question earlier about the jurisdiction, is there, is that, the city has no jurisdiction and there's assurance- And there's assurances, yeah, I, I have no idea what these assurances are. I don't know. Not, not today.
Right. And Scott mentioned the additional fire department on White Oak area. But if Short Marshay is not open, that doesn't benefit this community in any way. The, one other thing, when we were at the preliminary hearing two weeks ago, it was mentioned that this wasn't going to be a quick developing thing. It could take two to three years before it starts and ten years to be finalized. But there's a mention of a two-year maintenance bond. Is that two years from now and then?
Two years' maintenance bond would be carried upon the completion of the project.
It's two years after the completion?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. That was just my clarification. That's all I had from, ask those questions without interrupting.
Thank you. Jason, you have something to say?
Well, yeah, I was just going to clarify. So the process for this, since it's not a PRD, it's just a plat instead of a development plan, you have the preliminary plat, which, if there is substantial changes though, it can be brought back to the planning commission if there's something substantial to it.
Staff makes that decision.
Yeah, which Scott's been very good about bringing stuff back as needed if it's a substantial change. The civil plans kind of run alongside the approved preliminary plat. And then the final plat is not, the final plat is filed once all infrastructure is done, all as-bills are done, and the city engineer has signed off on all drainage. And the public works department has signed off on streets. Even though these are private streets, a reminder that Moll Mel requires private streets to also meet city standards. And then, once public works signs off on it, that's when the two-year maintenance bond begins.
Thank you. I, I wanted to make sure on some timing here. So this, this plat is obviously contingent on the zoning. I understand that. The zoning first reading is the eighth, and then the, the second reading is the seventh thing. Oh, that's right, we're on Mondays. So first reading is seventh, the first reading will be the seventh. I doubt, highly doubt you move forward with emergency clause. This is the assumption that's not. So the seventh and the twenty-first, and then the fifth. So these, the, the biggest issue I have personally for me, I can only speak for myself, not the commission, is that, you know, we've got a letter on the twentieth, and then he followed up on Tuesday. And, and majority of the comments, the county are very mundane typically. And here we got a bunch of residents that have been represented here tonight. I have, I don't, I don't recall ever Van Clenden making a statement of assurances in that language in that email. I didn't read it. It was received the twenty-fifth. Today's the twenty-seventh, so I didn't have, other than you reading it into record tonight. I, I was not able to personally read it, or even call him and make a phone call for that matter. But if, my, my question is that I, personally, I want to understand what those are regarding a development that's going to go in. It's like I saw the floodplain. I was aware of that too as well, and what assurances he, he's going to make. Because he's affecting our development that we're going to approve. I mean, these, these constituents are going to be living in Moll Mel. So what he's going to be requiring will be the requirements that are put on our residents is what's going to happen. And we have no idea what those are going to be, you know? Do we want a better road, a bigger road, a wider road? I know that he just has to meet the county requirements, but if we're tying these two together, because I can assure you, if it floods, the mayor's going to get called. And are the assurances that he's going to provide adequate to protect the residents that will be living in the city of Moll Mel? I'm not trying to be dismissive of the folks that are here this evening, but we have no idea that that's the case. And he's going to be providing some assurances, whatever those are, and I think that is good. I think that he will protect, I think that he will protect, as he did in his initial letter, the constituents of this area. And I think it is all our obligation to make sure to protect the constituents that will be in, living in the city of Moll Mel, including the issue of, of the, I, I do, I would like to ask, and he's always here, the, the fire marshal regarding the, that, that program that they use and how that accounts for the train or if ignores it, or whatever the case may be. So I, I guess from the applicant's standpoint, Eric, if we defer this on a preliminary plat, although that's probably not what you want to hear or like, at least we would get some of this worked out on what the county's going to require, and should we be comfortable with it in being able to move forward? So that, that's just where I, I stand tonight. You don't have to take it down. You don't have to. We can, we can vote and, and move forward. But, you know, getting, the other thing is, is that considering the public involvement that we had tonight and, and the comments that were put forth by the, by the county, we've never done anything like that. Not since I've been here, and I think I'm twenty years plus, put it that way. So regarding those comments, so at any rate, you know, if it doesn't, if you want to pull it forward a month and let us work through that with the county, it'd be appreciated. If you don't, we'll act accordingly.
I think when I initially came in and at the subcommittee meeting, I, I said, and it's certainly true, that I am not in a hurry. So I, I'm willing to do whatever is necessary to make the entire commission feel comfortable. I, I don't relish the opportunity to bring everybody back to have this fun, this fun experience again, but we, but, but certainly I'll do whatever, whatever's necessary. I will say there is an email from Van to subsequent, in the last couple of days, agreeing with the process of putting the plat up.
Yeah, I think we need to have some more understanding of what, because they're, they're attached to his a little bit. And the, for me personally, is the emergency access ingress to these folks, or, or to the folks that will live in your development, per se, has, has piqued my interest listening to the, and I did see quite a emails. There was a wreck, and there was a block for some extended period of time, and so on and so forth. So I think that needs to be vetted out a little bit too as well.
Well, and honestly, I, it would be better for me to know exactly what he is going to require me to do, so.
I would, I mean, you read the email on Tuesday, right?
Right, so I would like to know that for sure.
Sure, but it, it was on hearing for tonight, and these folks need to be heard, so we appreciate that. So it's at your leisure, whether you want to defer or you request as applicant to defer, and we'll make action on that.
So given that it makes you the, and I haven't heard from many of you, but I have heard from you. I, I'm certainly, one person's enough for me, so I.
Let my commissioner, I wanted my commissioner to understand.
One is good for me, and I, I see a lot of nodding heads, so deferring is certainly fine with me.
Okay. So you're, you're voluntarily going to defer?
I'm voluntarily.
We're going to act on it still yet, so we'll defer to the next regular scheduled meeting, which will be the twenty-fourth of April. I'd like to hear your motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to defer S U, S U B twenty-five dash three, Devoe Bend Lake Estates to the next meeting.
Your second?
Second.
Hearing first and second, now I act on the deferment of item number four. I flipped and flopped and made some, item number four for S U B twenty-five dash three for Devoe Bend Lake Estates. All those for the deferment to the reg, next regular scheduled meeting, same thing. Yes?
Yes.
Of course, no. So the, the item on, just to make sure everybody in the audience is here, so the item on the proposed preliminary plat will be deferred until the next meeting here for this commission, which is scheduled for April the twenty-fourth. The rezone will still move forward in its regular due process, which is an ordinance, and that will require three readings. And those readings will be on the eighth, the twenty-second, and then the action on that. God, I keep screwing that up, don't I? These people are going to kill me. So the seventh, the seventh and the twenty-first, thank you, Jason, seventh and the twenty-first with an action for that approval on the fifth. But they'll, by ordinance, it will be heard three times and discussed three times. And the opportunity for you to participate will be three times as well.
And then this, and then this action is deferred to the, to the May, I'm sorry, the April meeting, which is scheduled for April the twenty-fourth at six-thirty PM. And we will have a subcommittee meeting that the public is invited to for discussion. And that would be on the tenth of April at five-thirty PM here at City Hall.
Very good. We will close public hearing. City Council liaison reports, our first is March three, Commissioner Polk, which I think Tracy, you volunteered for that. I don't know if you remember.
Yes, I did. I was there, Chairman, and.
Excellent.
There was really no discussion on planning commission activities, so.
Very good. Ms. Winnick is not here, she's our secretary, and I do have a report she provided to me via email. Jason was ready to jump in for her. But Resolution twenty-two-five dash ten approving the conditional use permit to grant for the Stony Mountain subdivision was moved forward. And then the Resolution twenty-two-five dash eleven approving a conditional use permit for resolution to approve the conditional use permit for the historic, which is the U-Haul place here in town, was approved. Next, City Council liaison, Ms. Chair Gill, you get called on again for April the seventh, April twenty-one. Ms. Rose, you, you have that meeting, so. Any other action or comment for us this evening? Chair will entertain a mission adjourned.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Your second?
Second.
Hearing first and second, motion adjourned. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes, all those opposed. We are adjourned.